Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular City Council meeting. It is Monday, July 1st, 2024, at 6:00. The last councilman, Andrew Kansel.
Goodness gracious, heaven be proud of you. Thank you so much for doing this another day on your earth. And Lord, I just want to be witnesses for you in this community. Lord, we live in a wonderful community of good public service as well as good, good population. Lord, we just ask of your blessings on each and every one here, also those in our company. And Lord, we just thank you for the personnel that we have in the working force to do such a wonderful job. And we appreciate that as, as your elected officials. Lord, we ask you to be with each one of us, also those who have lost loved ones. It seems like we've been one of the more ferals in hospitals these days than we have in the business. And we ask you to be with those who are believed and are lost loved ones, and also those who are sick. And Lord, we ask you most to give us wisdom and courage to do the right thing for your city. And that's what we're here for. Lord, be with us now. Because thank you, brother.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of the night under Communications is the Mayor's Report. Just a few items to bring your attention tonight. Again, Watson Park, the Mayor's over there are continuing. The meeting room will soon be completed and available for members of the community to rent for special events, as they have in the past for family reunions and birthday parties. And our administrator is searching for some additional funding to make some additional improvements happen. Watson Park, hopefully in the near future. As you may notice, the work has been done repainting the parking lines of yellow curbs in the heart of downtown. Work's being done primarily in late afternoon, evening hours, and in parks and spaces to lay out the traffic as well. This past weekend, Lawrence hosted the Pioneer New Girl Softball State Tournament with the six U, ten U, and fifteen U divisions. Preparing ceremony is the Friday night. The tournament began on Saturday, concluded today. And thanks to all the city staff members and the community members that volunteered to help that beat. Several of our Lawrence Recreation Teams have been crowned district champions, and they're going to be competing in upcoming state tournaments. We wish them luck in having possibly a state championship here for us. Thanks to Jordan Blaze, our City Garbage Collection Company. Their generous donation of $12,000 was received last Monday. That is an annual donation again. Those funds will be used for the recreation programs. Orange County League of Cities next meeting, the quarter will be Thursday, July 25th, at 6:00 p.m. That's in Surseine Beach at their Civic Center on Pine Drive. If you remember, council wishes to attend, please let me know if you've gone or not. They're trying to head council, having food for the needy. Last Friday night, our Police Department hosted the 15th Judicial Circuit's Law Enforcement Network Meeting. That was in Public Safety Building. Officers from the State, County, Municipal Departments were present. Meeting was followed by a safety checkpoint on Main Street here in Lawrence. I know Chief Buie will probably tell us some more about that in his report tomorrow. And congratulations to one of our city employees, Mr. Wayne Fox, a civilian inspector. He's been appointed to a seat on the Orkney Record for the Orange County Silent Race Authority. He was recommended by the Orange County League of Cities and the Orange County Councils for a four-year term, which actually begins today, July 1st. Congratulations, Wayne. That's all I have in the Mayor's Report. Samantha, Chamber of Commerce.
Good morning. So I just got back from Columbia. We went there this past week for our girls to compete in Miss Africa. We didn't bring the crown home, but they did represent the city of Lawrence very well. So I should be proud of them. One of our Miss Lawrence Barong Festival team had meetings with actually named top five in academic scholarships. So that was really impressive because there's a lot of girls there. So she was in top five for academics. So that's really good. Our next thing, we've got a downtown Tuesday, which is July 9th, which is Arts Alive. And it will host art genders such as authors, painters, pottery, any kind of artsy kind of thing like that. So we hope that you will come. It is free to the public. It will be 6:00 to 8:00 on July 9th. And it'll be Main Street. We'll have some music playing, some vendors. The vendors will be in the Fifth State Theater. So we hope that y'all can join us that day. And other than that, that's all I have for probably. We're gonna take a little bit of summertime off because it's too hot to be doing any things. It's not like that would be a big anyway. So we'll probably start back in September with some events.
All right. Thank you, Samantha. You're in Chamber of Commerce. Moving ahead to our Administrator's Report, Mr. Young.
Yeah, I only have two things that I'd like to ask council to consider. One of the business item, three, three C, which is the discussion of the turf tank rental agreement. If you get out of that, I'd like council to consider taking a nap to the next meeting. I'd also like to, staff has looked at the contract for the Lockmore Regional Council governments. Me and staff and myself, one of the other group of weeks, take a look at that, ask some questions. If we declare a petition, I'd like for council to table it, too.
Committee reports, we had one committee that met last month. That was the Recreation Committee. Ms. Chair.
Yeah, we met on June 24th at 5:00 p.m. And we discussed the, as Mr. Young just stated, the turf tank rental agreement, but that will be tabled to receive additional information.
That was the only committee that met last month. Moving to the department reports. We have the written reports. Anything to add for code enforcement? Mary, one. Police Department, Chief Buie.
I gave him a written report. Like Mayor said, we had a checkpoint on Friday. It was very successful. We had thirty-seven applications. On Hall, the ladies, which is always a plus, and the tourists. Not too bad.
A little too many.
I don't enjoy the race.
Maybe I could question them before.
It was nice to see all you guys from various departments down there, you live in the mic, and everybody working together. Waiting for the checkpoint Friday night, or the fall tournament, that's the whole process. That's what you gotta do.
We had lots of people come through, no doubt, by the way. Come to check on no doubt, but they did.
Did you ever get your guys to see the checkpoint and turn around?
Maybe.
Yeah. We looked out for Oregon, they care, we went check them down. They did.
I love the worst order here. Recreation in the woods, probably out in Rex Center now, cleaning up after a big tournament. So we'll move now to the business section of the agenda. First item on the business is second reading of ordinance 06-24. That has to be a round control ordinance. I'll ask Ms. Gray to read that by title, please.
Order 06-24, in order to amend Chapter 6 of the City of Lawrence Code of Ordinances Regarding Animals.
This is up for second reading. Is there a motion from council regarding the animal control ordinance?
I like a motion to approve. I'm here for second reading of the document. Six twenty-four.
Motion by council party. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here none will call the vote of this Goss.
Yes.
Ms. Harrow.
Yes.
Ms. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Gerald.
Yes.
Ms. Page.
Yes.
Ms. Sykes.
Yes.
And the yes.
Thank you.
Next item will be a general time is Resolution 0424. And the resolution regarding downtown redevelopment and development master plan. Ms. Gray, if you just read that one, I have it all over here as well.
Resolution 0424, a resolution to adopt the City of Lawrence Downtown Master Plan 2024.
All right, Gary Grant, is there a motion regarding the Resolution 0424?
I'd like a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the downtown master plan, City of Lawrence 2024.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution from Mr. Page? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cole. Any discussion?
Yeah. I've got a question. What are we adopting basically with this? I've never have understood much about this thing because we never were involved in it.
Basically, all it is, is basically the plan that's really proposed by me. It's just a guideline. It's just, it's not, it's coming into suit. Basically, it's just a, it's a, it's a plan.
Any questions from Ms. Judge?
Yeah, it does. It does have a full plan, it's like, too.
It's not much like the way you've been coming. It's just. Now, I remember working down the, how to fix it, so it's, it was.
We've incorporated that within the, into the plans. It's just, it's a matter of.
All right. Second, is there something called from the discussion, Ms. Goss?
Yes.
Ms. Harrow.
Yes.
Ms. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Gerald.
Yes.
Ms. Page.
Yes.
Ms. Sykes.
Yes.
And the yes. Item C is the discussion of the turf tank rental agreement. Renegation from Mr. Young and from Ms. Gerald is true. We recommend to defer to handle that first. There are objections. There are no objections. Moving on to item D, it is a discussion of the memorandum agreement for detention of juveniles through the Lawrence Police Department and the Department of Juvenile Justice. This is something that we do each year. It's an agreement that juveniles are arrested by the Lawrence Police Department. You have to detain, find a part of juvenile justice in Columbia. And that warrants the processes and procedures and prestructure for detain juveniles. But, is there anything else?
Yeah, the only comment is I would like to see a standard agreement that all the counties, municipalities, and states follow the same agreement. It's actually, almost exactly the same. It's fifty dollars a day, two-five per half day. Mostly fifty dollars a day. And this is the only facility that we have. We're about, you're about to listen to this.
And this is nothing new we've done this.
This is a standard agreement we've done for a few years in the county, to keep the outside line.
So we will need a motion to approve and authorize Mr. Young to execute an agreement on behalf of all the city of Lawrence. Motion from Mr. Gerald to approve the agreement and authorize Mr. Young to execute on behalf of the city of Lawrence. Is there a second? That's second by Ms. Goss. Any discussion? Something called from the vote, Ms. Goss.
Yes.
Ms. Harrow.
Yes.
Ms. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Gerald.
Yes.
Ms. Page.
Yes.
Ms. Sykes.
Yes.
And the yes. Item E is a discussion of contract for technical services with Lockmore Regional Council of Governments. It's been recommended that, that the staff and the view.
Staff has a little bit more time to, to bet out the languages, I say.
Yes.
Just practice. Here, but I have some issues and questions, and I'd like to ask you to language change a little bit.
Any objections from council to table this for tonight and defer it to another meeting? Your member, uh, Van, I'll tell you what's tonight. Item F, which is our last item in business, is the surplus property list for the City of Lawrence.
Yes, we, uh, follow the list. We went over it. I got mayor and staff. And we had a couple of times to, probably, in the last six months. Trying to put together this surplus property staff, surplus property, which we have, which gets rid of here. And then we got all the, yes, telling this list, and this is what we do in surplus property. The only thing is, this requires a motion by council to approve this surplus property. And that's considered, this is, even this is surplus property, you go, you go out there. You want to change more about.
And the only thing I would add to it is, it's only showing two departments up there. We know that there is probably going to be some more equipment from other departments. But instead of waiting for a really long list given out, so at least we get these, these going that the departments have need. We don't need this. No other department in the city needs it. So it's important to be made so.
I was gonna ask a question, because I believe the original list was a lot longer than what we have tonight.
And from the original list, the only thing that was removed was two items from our department. It said they still, it says we just roll parts from here. So I asked him for that, yes.
The council versus the surplus property, this point means that this council is probably too confident.
He's definitely, he wants to be arrested.
Yeah. All those approved ideas is going to have, we were already set up.
My counsel, after hearing the explanation of the surplus property list, is there a motion to approve this list, surplus property? Okay, we have a motion by this Goss. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by this Coleman. Any discussion? I'm about to talk in the book, Ms. Goss.
Yes.
Ms. Harrow.
Yes.
Ms. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Gerald.
Yes.
Ms. Page.
Yes.
Ms. Sykes.
Yes.
And the yes. Those are all the business items we have on tonight's agenda. We'll move to the public and press comments. We have two individuals signed up tonight. First, Ms. Sherri Williams. Come on out and just state your name for the record and tell us where you live.
Sherri, we're in Fort Pass, we're in, in that, we're. First of all, we're gonna see what we're gonna do about the gang, the board. We need more patrol, patrolling that night, today. I mean, you know, these things going on. I, I mean, you know, I don't be home all day because I work, but they be in the yards that night. The dog just barked and barked and barked, and I just see the lights again. I can tell when they get messing with it because they got lights in the gun. And last week, we, we couldn't sleep a whole week because one, we didn't go sleep one o'clock because they running cars down, shot a girl in the face, and run all on pizza car trying to shoot at him, or be there, he trying to get away. And we, we told the police, we showed it, and it took next day at one o'clock for a power police came.
Oh, that's not true. They, they were out there.
They, they were not there because we was out there. We was out there. We told them, we talked to them, and told them what time the gangs started ganging up. And they did not come back. We stayed out there in there, one o'clock watching our house because they run my out and they put the pallet and shot the pallet on my out. And it ain't doing no better because they think we be in the bed, but we don't. It doesn't do them, it be, it need to be more patrolling down there, more, more, more people. We, we scared to go to sleep. I think it's wrong. And the parents ain't doing nothing about it because they don't care. But it's just not safe for us even walk good right now.
Well, I personally check on myself, so I know that we're out there.
Yeah, yeah, because I can tell when somebody come around my house because the lights blank on. And then I see them different color light. They freeze them golf balls in the freezer, little ball. And they put them in their guns and they start shooting and things. And he just lost some person. Mr. Calvin Brown, they shot him in the head, working short. He can, he went back up on that one yard, you know what he said? Now come on down and shoot me now. We come. Don't make sense. And then one more thing, my water bill, forty-five dollars last month. Now I don't jump, wait to send the fire, and I don't even be home in the daytime because I work. And I don't use that much water. And I don't know how, when if we gonna get somebody to read the water right? Because they not reading that water right. They can't read.
We can send somebody, I've got your address here. We can send somebody to do a second read on that.
Sometimes they read it two times. I, I goes out and when they find home, I say, hold it, uh-uh, they don't read it one time. Well, we got to read it again. And then it's, after that, then the garbage is just going up again, and I just had a raise last, last year, so. It's just too much, too much.
And I know Chief is aware of that issue that you referred to, the gangs over there. He's talked to him about what he's, what he's done and what he's planned about. I know this is an issue. I've answered calls from the community, and I'm urging him to keep, keep trying and keep working on that. But he has, he has made some adjustments.
Well, I'm speaking for my neighborhood. I had some okay being. My neighbor's him, was one. But I'm speaking for them, but they told me they couldn't make it.
Man, man. I was out there at Watson Park, actually practicing with my son. I used Watson Park very often. A lot of those kids knew who I was. I watched them go down Canyon Street, which is not our street. That was not law considered once, the county, it's a county road. However, I still took my ticket book out and wrote those kids off of Canyon Street so they can still find that ticket. However, I did surrender sit, I let them know who I was and take it to them. To my knowledge, they haven't been there since. I'm at Watson Parks a lot. I practice baseball with my son five days a week out there.
Well, they moved to another area when they, they ain't sticking around our area.
They weren't locals. They were actually out of Clean Sea and Nichols, those kids. Those kids that day. I'm not sure if they are local kids that are doing them. And the one house is part of, that lives over there, which is, Ms. Thomas Seaton. And I actually talked to Thomas Seaton about it as well.
We, we from Leo, um, Seaton, well, I live in Seaton Street, which is right across from Watson Park. We are concerned about curfew. I understand there's not a curfew for that park.
There's not either one of them. Neither parts have a curfew. As, as of right now, that's something we can discuss in the Public Safety Committee meeting. The park shouldn't be shut down at dark. I agree with that.
Yes.
Absolutely agree with it, but we have no way, we don't have an ordinance that I'm aware of that had, you know, that allows that to be done. What's that?
Can you explain what it was that they were using to keep?
It's, it's a hard pressured water gun. It's got water BBs. It's literally a water gun. It's, but it's high powered. We use it for training as far as fear of buildings and stuff. But being shot in the face or anything like that could cause a little bit of damage for sure. If they're at the park doing it, we have nothing for them to do it, you know, not allow them to do it at the park. But I have witnessed myself, if they're running around the street and doing that, so. Ms. Goss's daughter called me and I went out there and, and wasn't very pleasant at that moment because of all the damage they were doing. And to my knowledge, they haven't been out there as much since then.
Is that the same as a paint?
No, it's literally water. It dissolves. It hits you, it's just water. It's literally, it's called Orby.
It, it, they freezing it and making a ball. Because they hit, when they ran that car right there from my house, they hit the girl, shot the girl in the eye, and she said, oh, my eye. The girl that, the car that went over there to that apartment. And Ms. Suma Zik was coming up on the car, they trying to run her, and that led to the car accident right there, right there from me her.
Now, that's what I've seen reckless driving, as regards to any way of operating a vehicle, is reckless driving. And the warning for people in yards, invading private property. You know, those are the kind of hazards that I know that I saw.
And I've wrote stop sign tickets for the running stop signs. That's a four-point violation. So I suspect their parents are gonna come talk to me about that at court, when they have to come to court. I've literally wrote those tickets myself, so.
You think so? With the town, you think so? Because it is not safe.
No.
And I'm not on the gentle street, but my husband called the police department. And they finally got here, and I don't know what Maurice said to them, but they did finally get there. And he told me, running through the yard, shooting those guns, because I was outside. They start shooting next to my house. I got a brand in the house.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna refer.
And if I can't sit in my yard, or if somebody did tell me something, they might, they might be able to tell you about it. Something, it needs to be more patrolling against these areas because there is not enough. And I complained about it before, but it needs to be more controlled. We need more physical intervention.
It's the lack of parenting.
I'm gonna get a reading.
We're out there as much as we can be. All right. Move along. Let's hope we come in period. Uh, which person is, Mr. Todd Harrison?
Mayor. I, I've asked about this before. It was covered in December in that meeting. Hospitality audit that was brought up by Councilman Pageant, said there was millions of dollars spent out of place. It was voted to do that audit, and I want to know when this will be done. If my name was brought up, and it wasn't, it was not millions of dollars, not spent, and I want to see it in black and white. I need that for you. That stuff, I'll for you and do all it myself. That, that was pretty bad against my name at the time, politically done. The Historical Society, we, we spoke about that. And Mr. Pageant asked to get a proposal from the Historical Society about the theater, which that, um, numbers of times the city uses it and takes part at things there. I've seen you there. But we, we said that we would try to give them some money. And I, I know that the proposal's been made a couple of months ago, and I've been looking at its agenda, and nobody has brought it up. And I know that's a hospitality thing to be done. Just asking about that and if the city plans to help the Historical Society at all. Grand Strand Water Tour keeps coming up on, on the street. And, and the word on the street, which is on the street, is that Lawrence is just gonna give it to Grand Strand. It was written in newspaper. Mr. Young said that, um, just gonna give it over to Grand Strand. But I think a lot of they. I think a lot of people would like to know about the, the water and sewer, and that's spreadsheet that we're talking about here, to make sure the citizens know where the money's going and how much the bill is going to be, whether, say they can vote, whether or not they think we should do it or not do it. Last but not least, Police Department, which, from that, what we just heard, we definitely know we need a good police department, and we got one right now. And this is a statement, no raises mean we're going to lose policemen. I bet we lose five or six policemen in the next two, two months, if something's not done. And that's not to do with justification to the, to the children and people, and Lawrence, we don't need to lose police, policemen. I know we will. Every, every single municipality and county is going up on their edge, and ours going to leave, and then we're going to have to drag the bottom of the barrel, try to find them, we'll become a train of ground again. There was a car that was flooded last year, and we talked about that, and there was an insurance problem. I know what the problem was, the problem wasn't insured. And if that had been me, I'd been in jail. But that's, that's not right. I mean, those guys, they already have trouble keeping up good cars. For a car to get messed up and it not have insurance on it, not get replaced, I mean, that, that's the police department's got to bear that burden. That's just, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Those are the only persons who've signed up for public comment tonight. I understand from Mr. Zlaski and Mr. Flug, we don't have any executive session items tonight.
Correct.
Nothing else on the agenda, I'll give it to the motion committee.
Some would.
Second.
Oh, second. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Yes.
And the other yes. Leading your turn, you give that five seconds.